Ready? Hey. Alrighty, then I will call us to order at 6:03 and start with the land acknowledgement. The Altadena Library District acknowledges its presence on the traditional ancestral and unceded land of the Gavirino Tongva peoples. Altadena is located on the stolen homelands of the Haamanga tribal band. The traditional territory of the Gavirino Tongva is referred to as Tavongar, which includes areas currently known as Los Angeles County, Riverside County, West San Bernardino County, Parks of Orange County, as well as the four Southern Channel Islands. Entities such as the US government and non-native settlers have subjected the Gavirino Tongva peoples to historic and continuing injustices, including genocide, forced displacement, and cultural and linguistic erasure. Altadena Library commits to learning, educating, and informing its staff and residents of present-day Altadena about the rich histories, vibrant communities, and culture of the Gavirino Tongva people, present and past through our collection development resources and program offerings. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to you, Catalina.
I'm Catalina Theodore, and I was just wanting to say sometimes evening to acknowledge the life and work of the community member and former Altadena Library Trustee who recently passed, Mr. Tom Hubbard. We actually have Tom's wife here, the senior manager, so thank you and welcome. We'll take a moment of silence this evening just to acknowledge Tom's passing. Thank you for joining me in that moment of silence for Tom. Tom was a library board member from 2007 to 2015. His time on our board is chronicled not only in our board minutes, which are very expensive, but in Tom's very own blog, which currently survives on the Internet Archive. And I'd just like to read a little excerpt from that because when I was looking at stuff, I was really delighted to find this. The post is from Tuesday, November 7th, and this is around election time. "With gratitude and humble heart," it reads, "well, as I write this, notes from 10 of the 12 precincts on the Los Angeles County Register of Governor's Books site have been posted. While we wait for the final count, we'll recollect, at least I will. For me, there is an overwhelming sense of how much I owe the many old and new friends who helped this campaign. Some took precinct lists and found their neighbors, others went door-to-door talking to people and leaving bookmarks. A few opened their homes and gave me a chance to talk to neighbors they've embedded. A few arranged for me to talk to groups such as Rotary Week ones. Others made it possible for me to speak to groups that gave money to the campaign. Finally, my life, Monta, has served tirelessly and brilliantly as my faculty manager. And Margaret, Margaret DeVeist is keeping the account straight and reports to the California Fair Political Practices Commission accurate as treasure. I all owe all of you a great deal. It used to seem odd to me when a successful political candidate possessed humility after being elected to an office. I could understand pride. I have trouble with humility, but not anymore." I realize now that when I oh, I realize now that when a candidate says I could have not done it alone, that is the truth. Tom not only kept up a blog, but he also wrote poetry as well. So I'll go ahead and read an excerpt from that. This one is honoring loyalty. "Today we pause to recognize a most amazing crew, made up of our employers, employees, and more than just a few. Some seventeen employees are deserving of our cheers for giving us their service for three hundred sixty years. The kind of worker loyalty is truly something rare. You mustn't take it lightly. You don't find it everywhere. But everywhere you find it, it's an object of the light, and you can say, you can safely say, ah, yes, they're doing something right. The key to this phenomenon, phenomenon at least, it is my view, is how your workers feel about the jobs they're asked to do. I'm satisfied that you will find one reason why they say is that their satisfaction is beyond what they are paid. I say this since it's clear to me that there's no way on earth that could match their salaries to what they're really worth. The thing that makes it possible for them to fill their roles is a profound commitment to the library and its goals. So thank you, senior workaholics, whom we recognize today. We honor your commitment and look forward as you stay. We're glad that you are with us as we work in this arena, providing information to the folks of Altadena." So, what? Tom's wife, Monica Hubbard, recalls Tom's favorite volunteer opportunity during the time that he spent volunteering here at the Altadena Library. She has asked that those wishing to donate in memoriam to Tom's funeral direct any donations to the Altadena Library Foundation. We're deeply appreciative of the work and dedication of Mr. Hubbard and grateful for his service to this community."
Thank you. May I just say something?
Absolutely.
Um, I just found out this morning that you were going to take this few moments, and I just wanted to come and let you know that of all the activities that Tom did in the community, the library was his absolute passion, and he loved every minute of the seven years. And I just, for those of you who don't know him, I, I just found these last night. It was buried before two of us. So if you can see what a great guy he was. He had bookmarks made for his campaign literature. So if you need a bookmark, you can look at this picture.
I love that. Thank you.
Smart.
That's great.
Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you, Monica.
Thank you, Monica.
Yeah. Thank you so much, and thank you for being here. Thank you for sharing that, Catalina, and leading us in that moment of silence. Um, okay, there are no other comments. I will do the roll call. Trustee Rem.
Here.
Trustee Justin.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
And Trustee R.
Here.
And I am here. Is there any reordering of the agenda items? May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Mm-hmm. Sure.
All in favor?
All right.
Excellent. Is there any public comment?
There is none.
Okay, great. All right, moving on to the consent calendar, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Okay.
And all in favor?
All right.
Excellent. Thank you. So then we will move into department report, uh, department updates with the department reports that were in our package. Are there any questions or comments on the reports? Okay. Thank you for the work that you all continue to do. It's wonderful. Um, we next have reports and presentation. There was none from the support groups that I saw on the packet, right?
No, they're not present in the Zoom room. I would just quickly, on their behalf, mention that the friends are on their summer break right now. Um, they did do their final, what we would call a book sale, but it was all about giveaway, and they, on June 28th, and are no longer taking donations. They just still have some items downstairs to keep the bookstore upstairs running. Uh, I believe they'll resume their monthly meetings starting in September. As far as the foundation, Ray and I attended their meeting on, uh, July 30th. I think it was last Wednesday. Um, their full steam ahead planning for Taste de Dina, which this year is not really meant to be a huge fundraiser, but rather a friend raiser. Um, that has been scheduled for October 4th at six o'clock. Hopefully, all of the trustees can make that. Um, I think that's about all the share, wouldn't you say, Ray?
Yes, that's it.
Okay. And I will also add that thanks to Monica, um, wanting to steer people to donate on behalf of her husband, uh, we completely updated the website for the foundation so that it's one place to go to donate, so things are cleaned up substantially, thanks to Catalina. That's good news.
Thank you.
There's a fly, sorry.
I know.
I'm like, I'm like, be cool about it, but I'm not being very cool about it.
No, I was trying to be cool about it during the
Yeah. Dancing.
Yeah. Wish it would go away. Um, okay, then shall we roll into administrative updates?
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, trustees, staff, and the many members of the public that I'm sure are watching. Um, I'm going to focus largely on recruitment, being that that is what we're spending a lot of time doing right now. I'm very excited to introduce you to Adie Bosganyas.
Hi.
Our new Adult Services Manager. She started with us last Monday, July 28th, and her and I met this afternoon again today and described it as hitting the ground running. There's lots to learn. Um, also in the recruitment, um, information, uh, Erin Kimbrel has resigned his position. He was our Innovations Librarian for the last several years, um, and oversaw our Makerspace Fab Lab work. Coincidentally, Adie ran the Makerspace at Lundell, so it was kind of serendipitous that she joined us at this time. Um, and worked, had a good week with Erin to catch things up. So we're really, really excited to have her on board. She's bringing in the wealth of skills and experience we need at this particular junction. Um, I don't know if you want to say anything to Adie before I move on.
Sure. It's a pleasure to be here. As Nikki said, I've passed by a couple of years over at Lundell, the most recently developing their Makerspace and their newly renovated SoundSpace. But I am thrilled and excited to join everybody here at Altadena Library District, and I'm excited as, like, hit the ground running and see what we can do. Looking forward to Bob reopening soon, so yeah, yeah, that, and we'll see what we can do, renovations here, so lots of cool projects coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
And we've stolen another employee from Lundell. They're still speaking to me, so it'd be worse. Um, so yeah, in addition to that, I'm also excited to announce that Catalina has been promoted to our Administrative Specialists.
Yay.
Yay. Um, she was acting in that capacity for the past couple of months, working really closely with I Bailey, so it's been a really smooth, natural transition. We did post, um, her position, Administrative Assistant. I was just looking through those applications. I think we've hit about sixty already. Uh, so that's going to be another very competitive recruitment that we will be working on, but congratulations, Catalina, well deserved. Uh, let's see what else. Um, so as quickly as we bring the interns on, then they're out the door for the, after the ten weeks of being with us this summer. Uh, I have been conducting the excellent reviews with, with the six interns that we've had, four of which are our interns that we pay as district. One was through PCC, one through PUSD. I have to say, all six of them are outstanding. It was, it's been a pleasure to have them here. Uh, we're in the process of offboarding a couple more of them, but uh, it's, it's amazing to me how competitive it's become to select the interns. Ashley's mentioned, as they go through the applications and the selection process, like, people want to intern here, and we're really getting some great people on board, so I told them, I'll keep an eye open if there's open jobs, because I think that's a great pipeline for bringing in talented people as well. So we're working on offboarding, some of them are, last week was, uh, last week was their last day with us through the end of August, so in addition to that, we also sadly said farewell to our IT specialist, Alfredo Sanchez, who was a wonderful addition to the staff. He worked with us for about a year and a half under, uh, David's leadership. It was a newly created position. It was great to have some support for David in the IT sphere, but he got a promotional opportunity a little bit closer to home. We're very happy for him. We've also posted that as an open recruitment, but plan to try to fill it in a part-time capacity, knowing that Maine's going to close for renovation, and we think there'll be a little bit less of a workload come the closure of the library. And we received lots of applications for that, too. I feel like all I do is review applications, honestly. Um, and as I mentioned, Innovations Librarian Erin Kimbrel took a position with NAU to run their libraries, Makerspace, and do other programming. It was like the next great step in his career. We're really happy for him, sad to see him go, but, um, working with Ashley and Adie now to like work on getting that job posted and recruited. So that's what's been going on with recruitment. Um, I know we have a long agenda, so I don't really want to go into too much detail. I'm sure Katie will touch on crisis and recovery for, right? Um, I do want to point out that I don't think we put it in the last report that we did, that we had the first partner visit. We've actually had several interactions with the governor's office, which has been exciting. Uh, she rolled out her annual book club with kids, uh, back in June, so it was great to have her here. She was able to visit with people at lunch at the library that day. Um, in addition to that, I was invited to meet with her and the governor on the six-month anniversary of the Eaton Fire. They did a press conference that day where they released, um, the LA County Forward Blueprint for rebuilding. Uh, so it was, it was great to be invited. It had about ten of us in the room, and just really wanted to know as people with roots on the ground, what we were hearing, what the challenges that are being faced, and talk to them about that. I did invite both of them to come to the Bob Lucas opening. Not sure if they're going to make it, but we'll see. Um, I will also point out that we had, um, accidentally left out the volunteer appreciation event from last, um, the report that we did in June. So thank you to Catalina and Diana and Finn for planning that, um, and for all of you for attending. That was great. And we're just really grateful for all of the volunteer work that we see at the library, especially with our, our teams as well as trustees. I know we ask a lot of you, so thank you. Um, other than that, as you can see, lots and lots of programs, partnerships, events, outreach, things constantly going on. Uh, we try to employ the divide and conquer um, mission as much as we possibly can, because if you get, I'm sure you see Bren's E blast that comes out every Wednesday, there is nothing but events and things going on. So I really commend the management team, too, for getting us scheduled to be at all of those things. We really, I think, have a really strong presence throughout the community, in addition to the many, many programs that we have going on here all the time. So knowing again that we have a long agenda, I think I'll cut it off there. I will say though, and I, and I, and I'm asking you back on the updated statistics sheet, we decided to move to like system-wide programming reporting and to eliminate number of programs. We just decided that we would just put program attendance, system-wide. If you want that broken out by site, we can do it that way. It is going to be an interesting year with us closing and opening, you know, the different sites. So this is the new structure that we're, we're going to present. If you have ideas or you want to see other numbers, just let me know, and we can present it differently. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
I think it makes sense to move program up to system-wide, especially because so many, many library programs are happening out of the libraries, like, you know, we probably would need a whole separate set of categories for that anyway, so I think it makes sense. I like still being able to track circulation by location. That feels really important. Um, I guess my only question on the new statistics are, um, with, um, sorry, where was it? Yeah, with the, the open rate of the monthly e-connect, that's just the library newsletter, right? Not the Altadena Connections community one?
Correct.
Um, could we get the, just because it's come up a couple, like, I was talking to somebody from LA County, and I was saying, oh, you know, the library has like twenty thousand subscribers on the Altadena news thing, and they were like, we didn't even know about that. Um, but maybe if we have like a way to, to track aggregate subscribers or something like that, because that feels like an important number. I know those two lists are different, and those two sets of emails are different.
Well, the e-blast that goes out on Wednesdays is the same list that we send our e-connect to at this point.
Oh, it is?
At one point in the past, you know, during the pandemic, we were sending it to everybody.
Right.
Altadena Connections.
Yeah.
And then people stopped opening ours. So then we started splitting it off and had like six or seven hundred people on just the Connections email list. But then when the fire happened, we started sending it to everybody again, and we still are.
Got it.
Um, so there's not a plan at this point to split the two, but we could report the open rate for the two separate um, blasts that go out. There's the e-connect at
I thought they, I thought they were separate. If it feels like it's not worth it to separate them.
But this doesn't reflect the e-blast open rate that sends out, so what I could maybe do is put open rate of e-connect slash e-blast, whatever, connections, and then have the two numbers in the box.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Easy to track, too.
Yeah, it would also be good if it feels like, okay, in the privacy department, to have the number of subscribers.
It's just our email list based on our accounts go-to, so I don't, I don't know. I'd have to look into that.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think that would be hard at all, especially to get the open rate.
Yeah, because like thirty-six percent of what, right?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But I think this looks great.
Any other questions or feedback on the statistics sheet? Or I'll mention questions for Nikki. Okay, then moving to the district financial reports. What, Kristy here?
I am. Uh, good evening, trustees and staff. Um, what we have, uh, tonight to present are the preliminary financial statements for FY25. We are working with the auditors currently, and you'll see final reports. I believe we've got them scheduled for the November meeting. So, uh, as of today, these are, are pretty final. We've got a few minor adjustments to make and a few audit entries that we prepare only at year-end, um, but in terms of the budget, most of the items are pretty final. So if you turn to page forty-nine, just lost my screen, page forty-nine, uh, line seven, revenue came in at about ninety-seven, excuse me, ninety-nine percent. I just lost my screen. There we go. Um, came in at about ninety-nine percent. That might fluctuate a little bit when we receive the county report. We're expecting that in the next week or two, uh, to see if we come in a little, but that's pretty close, uh, given that there were a few, um, refunds and things, uh, regarding property taxes. Um, line seven, salaries came in, or excuse me, line thirteen, salaries came in at about ninety-six percent. That just has to do with some of the positions, uh, being vacant during the year, um, while they're being filled. And line thirteen, excuse me, line twenty-two, benefits, retirement, and taxes came in quite a bit lower at eighty-two percent, and that is because there has not been a decision, um, to fund anything toward the UAL, uh, the unfunded accrued liability for your pension. That board usually decides that after the final audit report, and it's likely that that payment won't be made this year, given some of the other events and things that have occurred since the, the fire. The other line that's down a little bit is the PERS line, and that is because the CalPERS, um, we had put in some padding for some prior adjustments that we thought might need to be made, but CalPERS made a decision and said no, um, that we were not able to, to fund those. So both of those lines contributed to that. Uh, if you look at line thirty-six, total operating expenses came in just above budget by about seven thousand dollars, and that's primarily due to the vehicle maintenance. Um, now that there are two, we've budgeted a little bit more for future years. And then also, we will be doing a little bit of adjusting on the county tax collection line. We do that as part of the audit to assess some of that uh, against the CFD. Some of those collection costs will have to do with the, uh, special tax that has been collected. Line forty-one, professional, again, that line is over by just about two thousand dollars, primarily due to the audit and financial consulting line, and that has to do with, uh, the vacancy in the position that has now been filled, uh, by Catalina. And we want to offer, I would like to offer my congratulations as well. Worked with Catalina every day that I've, or, um, since I've been with, with I Bailey, and it's just always a pleasure. She's always helpful and, uh, doing always above and beyond what we've even asked her, what she's required to do, so we're really excited to continue that. Um, and so you'll see those lines go down again as some of that, those duties are taken in-house. Uh, information technology line, uh, line forty-seven is at eighty-six percent. It's all related, uh, to that internet service E-rate line. Part of it is timing, and part of it is, um, is that some invoices, uh, aren't in for the year. So that line will go up slightly, but it will still be under, um, because of a delay in their, in their reporting. Line fifty-eight materials is about eighty-nine percent. Again, some of these lines are due to the closure of the library in January and February. Uh, so some of those dollars were not, um, some events did not occur and, and things were not purchased here. The other thing is that there was a lot of grant funding, and those dollars are used first, so some of these lines were funded by additional grants. And the same is true of line sixty-seven on programs, ending at about eighty-five, uh, percent due to grant funding for some of those lines, primarily in the summer reading line. Uh, as of today, for the preliminary statement, line seventy, the projection is that you will add two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars to the reserve. The board could still make a decision to put some of that into the pension funding if they wanted to, um, and if not, it would just go back to the reserve. I think that line might change a little bit, but not, not too much. Again, a few more things that we'll do for the audit, and then if the county comes back with something different, that's what would, um, cause that line to fluctuate. Any questions on the general fund report as it is today? Okay, the grant report, um, again, all funding has been spent, and the only reason you're coming in at ninety-two percent, if you notice on the line eleven and line thirty-six, that you're coming in at thirty, ninety-two percent, and that's because part of the funding that came in for lunch at the library extends into the next year. That grant goes into January, and so only thirty thousand of it was spent. The remainder has been moved over to fiscal year twenty-six and will be spent out there. Otherwise, you can see by category how the different, uh, donations and grants were, were spent. Any questions on donations and grants? Okay, the next two reports are your building project report, um, or excuse me, the next page is the combined summary, which is your general fund and grant together, and again, just summarizes by line, so you can see which funding source is paying for which line. And you see the same result here with the two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars that would be added to the reserve. It's the following two statements that have to do with your building projects. One of them is, is summarized and reports only on what's being received and spent this year. That's the first page. You can see we're at about seventy percent for spending. Um, revenue actually is about a hundred and twenty-seven percent because we're pretty conservative in budgeting interest income, and that came in a little bit higher. Expenses are down a little bit in some of the lines. Interim housing wasn't needed because the primary focus this year has been Bob Lucas. Um, and the contingency line for Bob Lucas, I don't believe, we're showing it not touched at all. It may change just a little bit after we get our, um, reporting together with Jennifer for year-end. And then the next one will show you what, how it has been spent. So the next page, uh, page fifty-four is your net proceeds. We're at about twenty-eight point six million. That is, you know, your bond, your grant, any district funding that was provided, and interest income. And then you can see the expenses by category. So as of June thirtieth, eighteen point eight five remains in bond proceeds to be spent, and three point seven of the current, uh, allotment for the grant remains to be spent. There will be an item, um, coming before the board in a couple of weeks at the next August meeting to discuss reinvestment of those funds. And I think one of the committees, the committee might have met and already discussed this, but we're bringing a recommendation and discussion to the full board in August for that. And that's all I have unless you have additional questions. Okay.
Thank you. Hey, Kristy.
Thank you, Kristy.
All right, shall we move on to our Board of Trustees and Board Committee reports with the Facilities Committee?
Um, I'll look this reopen in ten days. Um, there's, there's been a lot of stuff at the last minute about things that we can do as we're wrapping up this project, things that we are gonna do later, because doing them now is too complicated and annoying because of the rules. Um, but bottom line, everything is in really good shape. It all looks amazing. Um, if you haven't had a chance to walk through yet, um, I really encourage you to set up a time and check it out before we have everybody there on the sixteenth, but it's, it's going to be an incredible location. I think the outdoor space is really exciting, so that's great. It's super exciting to see this project, um, come to a successful conclusion and basically on time and on budget.
Come to a successful conclusion and basically on time and on budget. I mean. Even with the fires, we're pretty much, we're pretty much on track, which is pretty cool. Yeah, it's amazing. In terms of main, we are still going through our sequo process. I don't think there's any major stuff to talk about there. We are moving forward with the expectation that everything is gonna work out just fine. Which I think is a reasonable expectation. So that's why obviously we're voting on that RFP for contractors. So we can start that process in parallel rather than wait for like the whole CUP to be done. But yeah, I mean, really, it's just, it's a lot of details. I know that the. Everybody, everybody who's working on this and loading stuff into Bob Lucas and getting everything back up and running is working really hard. So it's an exciting time. Happy to answer any questions. Or Justin, if there's anything you wanna add, sorry. Yeah.
No, covered it.
Okay, thank you. Let's see if the overview. So there's Sarah and Jennifer Bradley.
Hello. Good evening.
Hello, give me just one second. I will bring up our presentation.
Great. Thanks, Sarah. Can everybody see that? Great. Well, good evening trustees, staff and members of the public. I'm Jennifer Bradley. I'm legal counsel for the district. And so the presentation tonight is in regards to the twenty-five, twenty-six annual special tax levy. Related to the Altadena Library District Community Facilities District number twenty-twenty dash one. Next slide, please. And so the district was established to finance improvements to the main library. And Bob Lucas Memorial Branch and Literacy Center. And also a maintenance component for certain services, all of which are financed by special taxes that are levied within the boundaries of the CFD. And in twenty-twenty-two, the CFD issued bonds to finance the capital improvements portion. And a covenant in the indenture related to those bonds that the CFD makes is to levy taxes. Those special taxes in an amount sufficient to pay debt service on the bonds, in addition to administrative expenses when due. If any, and to replenish the reserve fund back up to the reserve requirement should there be any draws. Next slide, please. And so NBS is the district's special tax administrator. And they figure out through the rate and method of apportionment of special taxes, what the special tax requirement is. For each year, based on a number of factors that include what the annual debt service on all outstanding bonds payable on in that year is. Whether there's a need to replenish any reserves, if if the reserve fund was drawn on. To pay for the services, that maintenance component, what the costs are for administrative expenses. Whether there's a need to replenish any operating reserve. And to account for any reasonably anticipated delinquencies in the special taxes. And so based on that rate and method of apportionment. The the order of of tax levy is first levy up to the maximum tax for all property classified as developed property. And then levy on property classified as the taxable contingent property. And I'll turn over the next slide to Sarah to walk you through some of the numbers.
Yeah, and before we, before I switch slides, I did just wanna mention, this is the first year we've seen taxable contingent property as a separate category. Prior to the fires occurring, we were levying developed property only. So those properties that had been levied as developed. That are now showing as essentially undeveloped per the rate and method definitions related to the fire. Are now classified as taxable contingent. So we've done a comparison here. I will also note that this is the first year that the services special tax is being levied within the CFD. Previously, the services component at revenue had been generated by the parcel tax, which sunsetted after the twenty. Four, twenty-five fiscal year. So this is the first time we're seeing that services component be levied here with the CFD. And so if you look down at the bottom of this screen where you see the total levy amount, you see the numbers there for twenty-four, twenty-five. That includes the CFD and the parcel tax, so we can have that kind of apples-to-apples comparison in terms of dollar amounts that we're levying. By including the services component there, even though that was levied under a separate, separate line item. So you can see what the rates were last year for residential property. They were at the five cents per building square foot. And apartments and so forth, right? They're they're all levied proportionately the same amount, which is about half, just under half of what the maximum special tax rate was. And when we look at the rates for twenty-five, twenty-six, we are for developed property going up. To the maximum special tax rate. And again, going back to that methodology, we have to levy developed property at one hundred percent of the maximum special tax rate. Before we can then levy the taxable contingent property. So there are five thousand one hundred eighty-seven parcels that are now classified as taxable contingent. And because they are levied as the second step in what we refer to as a waterfall special tax method. Those are levied at less than the maximum, so those parcels would actually be levied at about five point six cents per building square foot. So there are some choices to be made, and there are some consequences related to those choices that we wanted to review. Choice number one would be to levy the maximum tax on developed property. And to the extent necessary taxable contingent property. Choice number two is to levy the maximum tax on developed property only and not levy taxable contingent. And then choice three would be to levy less than maximum on the developed property. The consequence of the first choice where you're levying the maximum tax on developed property and levying taxable contingent. Is that the district would be able to fully fund the debt service. The administration anticipated delinquency, right? So all of those components that you're required and coveted to include. On the CFD bonds, and then you are able to fund the authorized services to the amount comparable to what you'd been receiving with the parcel tax. For option number two, where we're levying the maximum tax on developed property only. The district would be able to fully fund the debt service, administration and delinquencies for the bonds. But would have a shortfall related to the services piece of about five hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Option number three, where we're levying less than the maximum tax on developed property. Would essentially mean that we're covering only that debt service and and only that bonded component. And so we would have a shortfall of as much as one million twenty thousand four hundred, which is the amount we've budgeted for the authorized services. So obviously, we'd need to know exactly how much less to tell you what the shortfall would be, but that would be the most that you could. Essentially, the least you could levy would be to cover the bonds. One of the other comparisons that we did that isn't reflected specifically on the slide. Is we looked at for twenty-five, twenty-six. Had the special tax requirement been levied across the CFD parcels. Without having to reclassify any of the fire-affected parcels as taxable contingent property. What that special tax rate would be for single-family residential. So again, just as another point of comparison. And that would have been at eight point nine six cents per building square foot. So again, it's it's more than the. The five cents that was levied last year because we're now including the services component, of course. That's the biggest driver. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the levy calculations or the options available.
I'll just add that this presentation was given to the CFD committee last week. And it's, we had it in the agenda order to go now because the special tax rate resolution is the next agenda item. So. This is what all of that is about. We just wanted to give a nice informational presentation to explain how we reached. Those numbers and the decision that was made. So any questions that and discussion could be now or if we move on to that other item.
Are there any questions? No, okay. Then let's move into the agenda item and the new business review and approval resolution. Twenty twenty-five dash zero-three levying special taxes within the Altadena Library District, Community Facility District. Is there, we don't need another presentation. We just need to discuss. Is there any discussion? On this item or questions or concerns?
Yeah, I don't know if Lou or Ray wanna speak to the meeting last week and. Discussion we had about this.
I think the presentation covered, I mean, we asked what we talked about. So it's uh. Kind of laid out the options and then it discussed what the rate would have been. Had the fire and everything that happened, so.
Yeah, and primarily, this keeps us whole. Obviously, we need to pay the debt service. So I had requested that number, the eight point nine six. So basically, the impact for the folks that are still standing is a cent.
Yeah, it's nine cents versus.
Yeah, so you know, optically, it might seem like, oh, my goodness, we're doubling the amount. But really, the burden that is unfortunately added upon the standing structures is is that one cent. And I think, you know, the other properties, the other classifications are lower, but that is by law. We have to, we have to assess the maximum. In the order of operations, and that's just what what happens there. So I think this is a, a, a good outcome. In terms that we will be able to continue servicing the debt and paying administrative fees without. Major consequences to the budget.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's right. I think it's good in twenty twenty-five terms, which is like.
Yes.
The set of decisions all of us are making all the time, where it's like, this is the least bad choice we have, and it makes sense to do that. And I think, I think that's right, but I mean, I remember when we were doing the Measure Z campaign, sitting with a number of. Folks and explaining like, hey, when measure A sunsets, this will happen. It'll go up to nine or ten cents per square foot and explaining that. And people are like, oh, yeah, I understand. So this was always going to happen, you know, in this fiscal year. Obviously, the addition of the taxable contingent category and the loss of so many homes has made it complex, but yeah, I think this makes a lot of sense.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, can we get a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash three? Levying special taxes within the Altadena Library District Community Facilities District.
Second.
Favor. Thank you. Now, next item is review and approval to initiate a loan from the district general fund to the community facilities district. Twenty twenty dash one, CFD, twenty twenty-two, special tax bonds. I'm not gonna read all of it.
So I, I'll start us out, but Christie can speak more knowledgeably to the shortfall. But from what I understand, typically as we collect the special tax in the past, it all went through the debt service. So every time we transferred money out of LA County. Some would go to class, some would go to US Bank, and we had the account with US Bank. Pulling that to be able to pay the debt service. Typically, we're ahead in those payments. Cause and they're in September and March, I believe, would be here. So we've been collecting those and. Because LA County, LA County has clawed back some of the money that. Homeowners or property owners are entitled to because their their land or property got reassessed when the fire happened. Were short by about a hundred, a hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars to make the payment on September first. So like, we collected much less than that, but because we're ahead in what we collect, or like. The payment's one point three, or what is the payment for September first?
Close to one point three with interest and principal.
Yeah, so you'd think we would be much shorter, but because we collect ahead. On that payment, we're only short by a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. So we need, we decided rather than to try to. Touch the reserve insurance policy that we have, that we're asking the district to authorize. The general fund to loan money to the CFD to make the debt service payment. And then as we collect backfill from the state and other places, we'll replenish that loan to the district. She can probably explain it better than me. Christie?
No, that was excellent, Nikki. I'm the only one that misspoke. The. It's about one point, it's a little less than one point three for the year, but the only payment that's due in September is about eight hundred thousand dollars. But we're still short that one hundred and eighty-eight thousand. So you're right, they levy and collect during the year. And it it's supposed to be there in advance to make all those payments. We have not received the final county report, so when we do, it, there's the potential that they could have additional. Collections or that they could take a little bit more back. So we do wanna make sure that that motion says that the. District would agree to loan just enough to make that payment. So we estimate it to be around a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. It could be a little more, could be a little less, but it would just be for that amount. And then we'll know in April. If people are still delinquent or if everybody catches up in April of twenty-six.
And I will also point out that we consulted with our bond and disclosure council multiple times on this. You know, she reviewed the staff report. We also worked with our attorney to develop the resolution. So that's how this was put together. So it's been thoroughly run through both. Sets of lawyers to make sure that this is the appropriate way to move forward for us to formally loan money to the CFD.
And just to to clarify, the the biggest contributor to the shortfall. In our view is deferrals, right? Do we think that's true? Is it delinquencies writ large? Or do we know, do we, I, cuz I know we, we had asked this question a while back, like, did we have a sense of? What was the biggest kind of contributing factor to that?
Well, I have to, I have to think that part, a big part of it is the fact that like. All of the properties that were destroyed that that have put in paperwork to be reassessed. They're paying that much less, starting from January seventh through the end of the fiscal year. So they've been credited back money that they already put out. So I think that's a part of it. I think deferrals play into it as well, which technically are not delinquencies.
Right, no, I know, I know.
I don't know. What do you think, Christie?
No, I think you're right. I think it's a combination of both. We've never seen an accurate. Breakdown of of the two, which is why we really won't know till April if we're, how much of that will be coming back. Yeah, no, that makes sense.
So as a data point, I haven't paid anything.
But because all, you know, the entire zip code is in there, there could be people who still have their homes that have elected to defer as well. The one thing I have heard is that if you're paying it through your mortgage, your taxes are automatically taken out with your mortgage. That those payments were made. They were not deferred. They, that's my understanding from the county, is those payments were continuing. And that people would not be given refunds. It would only be people who are paying them separately. So it does make me think that the higher percentage are the properties that were affected.
Yeah. I mean, the most recent number we got was what, twenty percent deferral slash delinquency? Which is high, but like we, for a while there, it was being estimated as higher.
Yeah. We do budget in 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 a little bit of delinquency. It's just wasn't enough, yeah.
Yeah, but to be clear again, this is, you know, purely a a timing issue. We're going to ourselves to be paid back by folks in the future. So, yeah.
Right, but it was also taxes we estimated collecting that we're not going to.
Right. But you will.
Well, no, some of those are never gonna come in.
Right, like you're a good example. Like you got reassessed. So now when you look at your property tax, you're gonna have zero for structure.
Yes.
So your bill is less. So all the money that was like allocated to cover that part of the special tax.
Right.
It's now being reassessed at the lower rate.
Right, but this was the the same thing in terms of. As properties are sold and rebuilt, you'll come back in a. as properties are sold and rebuilt, you'll come back in a
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, in the long term, for sure, yeah, yeah. Is this, um, and I think we talked about this in one of the meetings, and I can't remember, so I'm sorry, but do we have to do a disclosure about this? Like, inter-fund loan?
I feel like we do, but do you remember, Christie, I think for a no said no, I can't remember.
I don't know that we ended on that, I thought, yeah, maybe Jennifer can speak to that, I thought there was a little bit of confusion between all of us, whether it was required or just recommended.
Yeah, are are you meaning a disclosure to the market? Um, I I don't believe we have to, I can double check and make sure, but I don't believe you're gonna need to file an event notice, cause you won't be missing a payment, you'll actually be. Cause we'll be paying. Sure, there's a, you may, I'm not sure if you discussed previously, maybe um, doing a uh, initial, just kind of a voluntary disclosure about, you know, what you're doing. Um, that that may have been discussed, Sarah, was that correct, a voluntary disclosure?
Yeah, what we talked about was doing a voluntary disclosure when we have a little bit better sense of where where things are, um, now that we have the county data, et cetera. Um, we would do a voluntary disclosure, but no disclosure is required because we're not actually drawing on the reserve.
Thank you, um, Christie and E B K, I can't see your names, sorry. Jennifer and Sarah, thank you so much for your counsel. Um, if there's no other discussion, can we get a motion to approve the initiation of a loan from the District General Fund to the C F D Fund?
Move to approve.
On favor? Great, thank you so much. All right, moving into item C, review and approval of the R F P for um, proposal and contract documents for the Altadena Main Library Project. Who is reporting on this item?
Hi, Jennifer Pearson.
Good evening, trustees and staff, hopefully you can hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, um, so we have developed this R F P in conjunction with K M T G um, for the construction of the Altadena Main Library. This is essentially the same R F P that we used for Bob Lucas, updated with um, some new project specifics. Um, one thing to note, like Katie said earlier, is, you know, we are still working through our C Q analysis, and we are on track currently to have our C U P approved in December. But, um, and assuming, you know, that everything goes according to plan, we would like to get a contractor on board prior to that, so that they can start working on submittals and procurement of long lead items, so we're we're timing this R F P so that we, they have about a month before the C U P is anticipated to be approved. Um, and if the C U P takes a little bit longer, they'll have a little bit longer um, to do their procurement, but the intention is that they do not begin any demolition or any work onsite until that C U P is approved and the um, appeal period has passed. So that said, uh, we would be issuing the R F P uh, around August eighteenth and accepting the proposals up through October first uh, with the intent of awarding the project to the selected contractor at the October regular board meeting. Any questions?
Questions?
Jennifer, on timing for, so I'm looking at like the anticipated solicitation timeline, and then I understand sort of the marrying it up with the C U P and just, I think we have December sixteenth, twenty twenty five, so understood that the C N P S first. Are we parallel tracking, this is begin site construction activities, are we parallel tracking the plan check process along with the C U P in a way that would allow that to happen, or would it still be?
Yeah, so, so as far as plan check, um, building department has approved the project, we have clearances from uh, electrical, fire, mechanical. Um, the only things that we're still working through are are plumbing, there's some simple corrections that that need to be resolved, and um, there's some question about whether or not we need to do, I believe it's a grading permit or G med because of the um, square footage that we're, that we're working with, so the architect's working through that, but we do anticipate having those approvals um, by the time that we would need to issue an addendum to the contractor.
Jennifer, I had a question about our ad alternates, so I know that we moved our north side patio outdoor space into the project, but I see it still listed as a, as alternate number one. Um, is there, is that because of some rules about the plans we submitted?
No, no, so we moved that into our budget as our regular budget for the project, but we're still holding it as an alternate to give us the option of carving that out if need be, if the, if the bids, you know, come in too high and we need to cut something that is, um, you know, I know it's a beloved part of the project, but it is a piece of the project that can be easily removed without impacting a lot of other aspects of the project, so, so we have kept that as an alternate for that reason, but but we have been budgeting for that part of the project in our construction budget.
Understood.
Any additional questions? Then may we get a motion to approve the R F P for the proposal contract documents for the Altadena Main Library Project?
So moved to.
On favor? Well, thank you very much. Moving on, item D, review and approval of the privacy and data collection policy.
So good evening, um, today we're presenting a new policy, which is now called the privacy and delect, uh, data collection policy. Um, part of this actually was motivated by questions I had received from the board about ICE presence and what we were going to do in response in case they were to visit one of our library sites or one of our E S L classes or something like that. In talking to the management team and doing a little research, it was clear that the backbone of any procedure we put in place or protocol would be having a policy like this in place that spells out our commitment to protecting our patrons' privacy as well as how we collect data and and keep that confidential as well. Uh, so thankfully, Diana took the charge and did some research and uh, put drafted the original policy from there, uh, the management team reviewed it, um, and then we realized from further research that it made sense to pull in again, that data collection piece, especially as it relates to.
Library system, enterprise, enterprise systems that we use, um, the the library app, there's a privacy uh, policy connected with that that we had used to agree, uh, and agreed upon the use of for our previous app in which we're carried over and will be used for the new library app as well.
Yeah, so incorporated that in as well, and as we typically do with other policies, we ran this through our Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Team to to look at it through that lens. We also sent it to our attorneys, they provided feedback on it as well. Um, and so what we're presenting tonight has been very thoroughly vetted, honestly. Um, if you have questions, we're happy to answer those, but we recommend that you review and approve this newly created privacy and delect data collection policy.
Any questions?
I think it looks really good.
I had one question, and I know you had it reviewed by the attorneys. Um, in the the sections where it says, like, there it has to, you know, there needs to be like a court order or, you know, reason for law. Is there um, accompanying like procedures on who's looking at that court order, is it lawfully like, um, would it be lawfully executed, is it, is it legit, basically, is, so is there accompanying practices on how that, you know, is is carried out?
Yeah, so.
Did that ever?
Yeah, so as part of this effort, we also provided instruction to the staff at both the all-staff meeting and the public services meeting of what to do in the event that law enforcement or or ICE come into the library. And and basically, like, if they come in, we can't make them leave, they can only be in the public spaces, we've very clearly designated staff only spaces now, so that they know they can't enter those. Um, but if they were to come in and have a subpoena or um, a warrant of some kind, the staff were instructed that either myself, Ashley or David have to be the ones that take that information in, our plan is to then reach out to our attorney, have them review it, and we'll release basically as little as that we can possibly get away with. So there is a practice or a protocol in place that we've trained the staff on what to do in the event that that happens. And that's not just in the current situation, but like, you know, other places I've worked, police may come in and say like, does this person have an account, are they here, are they on a computer? You know, and we were trained on like, we don't reveal information like that unless it's court ordered, so. Great question, and yes.
Okay. Other questions? All right, and can we get a motion to approve um, the new privacy and data collection policy?
So move second.
On favor? So, thank you. Um, next, review and approval of the A L D twenty twenty five operational plan mid-year update.
So here we are again, halfway through the year, um, I want to start out by commending our Altadena Library District staff for another year of planning and operational plan, and then very quickly having to switch gears due to unexpected circumstances, um, in spite of our closing for almost two months, um, from January eighth through March fourth. As you can see in the report and um, grid, we're on track to hit many of our objectives that we set at the beginning of twenty twenty five. Uh, I'm really proud of our continuous professional development that all of our staff participate in, including individual development plans, assigned niche training, and much, much more. We're actually right now planning staff development day for October, uh, which again will bring everybody in and and continue to work on training. We also continue to work on our diversity auditing as it relates to programs and partnerships, as well as um, being dedicated to continuing building diverse collections across A L D. I also commend our marketing efforts, which you all see very regularly, as well as our presence um, in the community through the promotional work that we're doing, as well as, and and it's gonna be a future presentation, Ashley and I have talked about, of the growth of partnerships this year has been exponential, because something even more than we could have anticipated when we put together the operational plan. Um, and again, I think a lot of the work has been really focused on the building projects, you know, making sure that we're ready in terms of staffing as we open and close, and bringing on the alternate site faster than we had originally anticipated, so overall, I think we're on track, even in spite of the fact that like, we're on kind of a big wrench at the beginning of the year. Um, and happy to answer, and we do have pretty much all the managers here, any questions you might have about any specific objectives in?
Questions?
This is a dumb question, what's the difference between ongoing and in process?
I think I figured it out, cause I had the same question.
In process will have an end, like, I would like to see that it's something we say we tend to check the box. Going is gonna be something that will probably can keep happening next year, so I guess what we would say.
Okay.
Gotcha, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right, and this is something we have to approve? That's our action, yes, okay, then can I get a motion for approval of the um, A L D twenty twenty five operational plan with the mid-year update? On favor? Um, okay, so is there, are there any um, agenda items that need to be added or rearranged for a closed session? When can I get a motion to adopt our closed session agenda? On favor? Is there any uh, public comment on the closed session agenda item? All right, then can I get a motion to convene to closed session? All in favor? All right, so we will convene to closed session at seven oh eight in pursuant to the Ralph Brown Act for the purposes of discussion, discussing and taking action on conference of legal counsel. for the purposes of discussion, discussing and taking action on conference with legal counsel.
That is huge.
That's the thing.
Yeah. That's, that's so, yeah.
I hope you guys.
Totally.
I've heard that.
Right.
It's thirty cents on a dollar. Yeah.
Ready?
The confidence.
Yeah. Okay. Then we are reconvened back into open session at seven fifty two. And we have a roll call to do so. Trustee Lynn.
Here.
Trustee Marimus.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
And trustee Refin.
Sure.
All right. Um, as for reportable action, um, we have authorized a district director to initiate litigation against S C E with Baron Budd and D A and Coleman with respect to the Eaton fire. All right. Then, um, moving on to governance, is there any?
Uh, I will just point out that the regularly scheduled budget committee meeting, which was supposed to take place next week has been canceled. We won't make Boone come in for the third time in three weeks. Um, the main thing we're gonna look at at the next budget committee meeting. The main thing we're going to look at at the next budget committee meeting will be the unfunded accrued liability policy, which we think the timing will be good to bring that in November and then to the full board as we're approaching mid-year adjustments and deciding what we want to allocate to the liability anyway. Other than that, I don't think there's much else for governance.
Any announcements and planning, under announcements and planning, any correspondence or future agenda items?